We do this to the party of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Right, Ben, how do I make it that just one?
You are full screen, but see, you've got to go into your view, so it's just the speaker.
Where at?
In the studio room.
They are up there at View Trish. See up there at the very top.
That little food English.
Yeah, so there, only speaker only. There you go.
Oh, well, I didn't realize.
Okay, go back.
Well, that's.
Okay, go, you'll have to go back to your gallery.
We think we'll make it that way.
Sorry, I wasn't.
All right, well, we'll continue. I'll call the manager, the IT guy in here now. I can see all kinds of reasons to hire IT.
Especially trying to get us on door.
Come to the door this morning.
Any additions or corrections?
Uh, no.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a first and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the minutes from eleven eight.
Spread through them, they all look good, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a first and second on the minutes, all in favor.
Aye.
General public concern. I'm here, so we'll move on to Ben.
For, excuse me, first thing for the agenda today, I have to approve an application to open the county's right-of-way for Mid-American. This is to have Mepi come in and bore underneath C forty-nine at twenty twenty-six, two hundred and seventieth street. This is the abandoned acreage west of Steve Lynn's house. It's a handsome property.
It is, yes.
And I don't know that anybody's lived there for the last decade or so.
There hasn't been any.
But somebody bought it and.
They're gonna live there.
They're gonna live there, yeah, they're gonna fix it up.
Everything's in order, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve the application for the right-of-way, Mid-American. I'll second that.
First and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is the discussion of the hot water heater that we talked about last week, I believe. Follow-up conversation with Mitch for Dawson last Friday. The breakdown of their initial quote for us is fifteen hundred dollars for the hot water heater and the new electrical run from our breaker box to the closet that the hot water heater is located in. Thirty-two hundred dollars is the, what the water cooler was and fifteen hundred, or fifty, hundred and fifty dollars per filter. And that's how you get to that total. I guess at this point, I'd like to move forward with the hot water heater. Replacing that and getting that on the list before we get the new roof put on from Sands would be the top priority, eliminating that hole in the roof. I know Rick stopped out last Friday to have the hot water heater there and goes through the roof now. And then we also went to the back and looked at our second furnace, which was installed in nineteen ninety-six. Got a call in to Harry's to come out and take a look at it and see how good it is or see if we need to replace that while we're at it before we put a new roof on and eliminate that opening through the roof as well.
And also, by changing that furnace, we probably ducted into the garage part, so it could get rid of another puncture through the roof with some of an old Resner space heater that's in there. So the less holes you got going through your roof, the better off you are. Twenty-five-year-old furnace is probably reaching its lifespan.
So is that what heats what, the west side or the backside or?
It, it, what's it heat?
It heats the signroom location, the food pan, the old food pantry location, our lavatory where we do variations. And then it would also be heating the, what we call the receiving room, where we store motor blades, chainsaws.
Yeah, just basically keep it a little freezing in there.
Yep.
Well, I guess look at it and see where you're at.
The water heater part, I, I was out there twice and looked at it. Fifteen hundred, fairly reasonable, because there's a lot of stuff he's got to rip out. And then he'll put probably a temporary patch on the roof.
Yes, that includes the patch.
So he doesn't have to coordinate with them when they come in and do that. The only option I thought is maybe we should consider an inline heater. That way you're only paying for water when you need it, which isn't very often out there.
And talking to, I guess talking to Mitch about the inline heater, the problem with that is if you're only using it to wash your hands.
He never did hot water.
You never get hot water. By the time you're done washing your hands, you might start to get hot water.
Yeah, but that's basically the same thing with the water heater, in a sense.
By the time it runs.
By the time it runs from here to there, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing when you got a fairly, not a real long run, but.
And you're talking basically the same price.
Yeah.
Problem is longevity.
I, I think the inline heaters don't last that long. They, they line up and the water ain't real great out there.
Yep.
So probably the water heater would probably be the best rough to go.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve water heater?
I would like one, I guess.
I would make a motion then to, for right now, move forward with the electric water heater.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
What's the, is it, what, twenty, fifty gallons or what is it?
Uh, right now, I was looking at twenty gallons.
Twenty?
Which would be plenty.
That's plenty. More than enough for what we use up there.
Okay.
So we have a first and a second on the replacement of the water heater. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so move forward with the water heater and get back to us with the put-on furnace.
All right.
Beyond that, Steve really started today running Mike White's routes, so it sounds like Mike was able to go home this weekend, so.
Is Steve gonna be able to stay on as long as needed?
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's got a couple of days of here, he had things planned.
Right.
Which we're still.
We want to round that at all. We appreciate very much that he came back and helped us.
Works out great when you got an ex-employee to come back in, you don't have to worry about training and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's very awesome. I was glad to hear that.
Okay, is that about it for us?
That is it for me.
All righty. Okay, we move on down to discussion and action and ARP funds and recabling courthouse. My question is on ARP funds, how soon can we start putting that together?
We can put it together anytime, we just got to get a resolution done and then, um.
Every time you do something, right?
Every time you do something, you have to have a resolution.
Okay, so you have a revolution? For, for, to dedicate that money for recabling the credit?
Correct, correct. And it has to be worded, everything, of course, towards COVID nineteen. And John said that he would help us with, with all the resolutions that we need. When I talked to him, I don't know, was that three weeks ago, something like that?
Okay.
So, yep, that's all we have to do.
Well, I was.
In front of the board.
I was visiting with Trish this week and we're talking about our basement down there. And really, I'm sure the cabling company should make the decision for them which room is the best to move that server into. And I think we need to get moving forward on that, because this is a good time here for them to be getting it done. So that when we do get a new, if we do get a new IT person, we have, have it set up and ready to roll.
Yeah.
Because it's going to take several months to get this process done.
Was there any reason you can't get the resolution drafted for that and just get it done then? Move forward like Rick said?
Right, no, there's no, we just got to get John to work on it.
I'd say let's do it.
And then it's got to go, we got to get it on the agenda for approval, you know, just the normal.
So we'll give you the direction to get John to get us that revol, resolution.
Okay.
You were just.
I got it today. That resolution together and we can get that moving forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, now we have a discussion and approval of the Humboldt County IT audit from ITIC. Is that what you pronounce that?
ITIC. ITIC, yeah.
Okay, they were here last week, had a really good discussion, I thought. I, I feel it's something that we really need to look and see what our needs are.
I would agree.
Here's a motion to, I would make the motion to approve moving forward with the ITIC.
It was three thousand for your information, Rick. It was three thousand dollars, so I think this.
With the three thousand dollars for the study, I think it's money well spent and I think it's the right direction to go. I know everybody's had that discussion and I've been keeping up on it, so.
I will send you this motion.
Yep, excellent.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. See, we have something with drainage.
That's all over the place.
We'll, we'll go down and do committee reports and then we'll be ready for our eight fifty.
Wednesday, we had the mobile food pantry. It was well-received. Unfortunately, we had more people than we had food. We had a hundred and twenty-three families, two hundred and seventy-two individuals, seventeen vets, and we had twenty-five volunteers. So, um, I think by around five fifteen, we had about twenty cars that didn't get anything, which they just, that's, last time we had.
Left over.
Forty meals that, or forty portions that we had to try to get rid of, so.
That's unusual, isn't it?
Well, this time of the year, it's towards the holiday.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think we probably need to see if we can't step that up in next November's, uh, distribution, but.
So we got the same amount of food.
Yeah, she requests, I think she requested ten more than last time, but we just had more, more, more interest and more. So we fulfilled what we had and, and it worked out well, so. And I think that was all I had for.
Tuesday, I did a NACO webinar on the new infrastructure bill. It talked a lot on the highways and I think I forwarded that clip from.
Yeah, I didn't have time to.
Yeah, I think, I wanted to watch it again, because there was just so much information on it that, but they were talking about, I'm pretty sure the way I understood, there was going to be some money that will be going to the counties to decide what they're going to do for infrastructure. They talked a lot about broadband. And then they also had a, I took a picture on the screen of questions on this new infrastructure bill, like on transportation, broadband. And they really encourage everybody to call and talk to these people if we have any questions on it. So I know before we go forward, I know we talked maybe a little bit on broadband, maybe that's what we should do, you know, somebody should talk with them that understands that more than, than I do. But that was the only thing that I had. But it was a very interesting one. I can forward the email link to anybody who wants to, to watch it, because they recorded it, so if anybody wants to watch it. That's it, that's all I had was that.
I had an animal shelter meeting that I missed. I was down to Christmas land cleaning that up on Wednesday. And Thursday, Veterans Day, I was out here for the ceremony. That's all I had.
Well, I do have one thing in the past three weeks. Back on October twenty-eighth, I did have a building families Zoom meeting that I did attend. I was on the twenty-eighth of October, and that was it.
Okay. I was out to the landfill Tuesday, and they did get that drainage work done out the landfill, so we got the overflow pipe put in for the borrow pit, which is going to help us out if it ever starts raining a ton like it used to. Of course, October's pretty wet. And then I did miss the dog shelter meeting. I was gone. That's up to me. All righty, we're getting pretty close. Do we have to do that right on our time at eight fifty?
Finish.
Close to it.
Real close.
Why don't we move into that and then we'll wait for the time to start.
Recession of the Board of Canvassers, is that what you need? Make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, let motion to recess from Supervisors and from the Board of Canvassers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we are convening as the Board of Canvas, and we will do the second-tier canvasser city and school elections. What is this? I don't recall doing this like.
This is, um, the cities and schools that we share with other counties.
Gotcha.
So we're just kind of consolidating their votes and our votes.
Okay, we'll wait a minute and then we'll start. Be official.
How do you want to do it?
What do we got?
Well, I got Humboldt votes that have already been certified once, but we can double-check them if you'd like. And then Cassuth, Webster, Pocahontas, and Wright.
Let's do the shared county, because we've already did Humboldt's once.
Okay.
Yeah, and the way I'm talking this morning, I'll shoot, let someone else do it, because I'll screw it up.
You're just trying to have a revolution for some unknown reason.
Twist it up today.
Lot of whack, right? I don't remember each one. It takes one of the counties. And when we go through them on here, I'll just have to read the numbers. Does that work?
It's a four, but somebody had to sacrifice and do that.
I'm look, where, what are we looking to, all the zeros or?
Yep.
That's basically doing, confirming a bunch of zeros.
So I read that it's the Cassuth County election canvas summary with Twin Rivers.
When I get to, well, yeah, we can do that.
We can start with Gilmore City Mayor. See, I've got that one.
Okay.
Or does everybody have that?
Um, you have that one.
I have that one, okay. All right, um, Landon Bailey received thirty-two votes. Bruce D. Torkelson received twelve votes. And then it says scattering received zero points, or votes, I'm sorry. Forty, do I need to do the total?
Um, yeah, just forty.
Okay, total is forty-four votes.
Okay. City Council for them?
Okay, City Council. Tom Kavanaugh received thirty-two votes.
Okay.
Levon Hoover received twenty-nine votes. Erna Jacob received twenty-two votes. Scattering received zero votes. Total of eighty-three votes.
Okay.
And then Gilmore City Bradgate School Director-at-Large, Marsha Hoban, received forty-five votes. Mitch Nielsen received thirty-nine votes. Scattering received, received zero, and total eighty-four votes. Um, Gilmore City Bradgate School at Large to fill a vacancy. Logan Peters received forty-five votes. Scattering received zero. Total of forty-five votes.
All I've got. And then Webster County should be on that one also. Who has Webster?
I got Webster County.
And that one will be really hard to read.
Oh, was I lucky?
Gilmore City Bradgate, this is for Webster County. Director-at-Large, Marsha Hoban, zero. Mitch Nielsen, zero. Scattered, zero.
Okay.
And I got, um, Gilmore City Bradgate School District at Large to fill a vacancy. Logan Peters, zero. Scattered, zero.
And that's that one.
Webster County Humboldt School District at Large, Shane Davis, zero. Scattered, zero.
Okay.
Humboldt School District, District One, Tate Saturn, zero. Scattered, zero. Humboldt School District Three, Robert Myatt, zero. Scattered, zero. Humboldt School District Four, to fill a vacancy. James Mertz, zero. Scattered, zero. I got all zeros. Humboldt School Public Measure KO. Yes, zero. No, zero. That's all Webster County.
And?
Mine is all from Wright County.
That's Humboldt, right?
Yeah, that's Humboldt School District.
Okay.
So this is all from Wright County. Humboldt School, uh, Director-at-Large, Shane Davis, zero. Scattering, zero. Total, zero. Humboldt School District, uh, number one, Tate Saturn, zero. Scattering, zero. Humboldt School Director, District Three, Robert Myatt, zero. Scattering, zero. Humboldt School Director, District Four, to fill a vacancy, James Mertz, zero. Scattering, zero. Humboldt School Public Measure KO. Yes, zero. No, zero. That's it.
Then it's your turn.
I've got, um, Humboldt, oh, excuse me, Cassuth County and TRV at Large. Kristy Olson, zero. That's it. Daniel Dahl, zero. The same, Cassuth and TRV. That's it. So I'm assuming that being viewed as a shared, and all the people from the Humboldt area, they didn't, is that the reason they get zero? Because these have already been canvassed by Cassuth and their numbers.
And, uh, we did our Humboldt elections, they did theirs, and so we're just confirming what they have. Okay.
Lot of zeros.
Okay. Do you need, we need to declare the winners, I guess?
Uh, yeah, do we need to? Do you want to or want me to?
Let me go ahead.
You know where your numbers are.
Let me go ahead.
Okay, for Gilmore City Mayor, Landon Bailey with thirty-two votes is the winner. Um, Gilmore City Council at Large, Tom Kavanaugh, thirty-two. Levon Hoover, twenty-nine. These are the two winners. Gilmore City Bradgate School District at Large is Marsha Hoban with ninety-five. Mitch Nielsen with seventy-nine. Gilmore City Bradgate School Director at Large to fill a vacancy, Logan Peters with one hundred votes. And Humboldt School Director at Large, Shane Davis, three hundred and forty-nine votes. Humboldt School Director, District One, Tate Saturn, three hundred and fifty-nine votes. Humboldt School Director, District Three, Robert Myatt, three hundred and fifty-three votes. Humboldt School Director, District Four, to fill a vacancy, Jim, James Mertz, three hundred and forty-nine. And Humboldt School Public Measure KO, three hundred and six votes for yes. Twin River School District at Large, Kristen Olson, one hundred and ten votes, and Courtney Sampson, two. Twin River School District at Large to fill a vacancy, Daniel Dahl, one hundred and six votes. And those are the winners.
I'll make that motion to accept. Dan has what Trish raised.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it looks like we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the Board of Canvassers and go back into the Board of Supervisors. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed, I should say? Motion carries. Okay, we're back as Board of Supervisors. And we, we have a little bit of drainage to take care of.
So do we have to go into drainage?
I think we go in there.
I, I'll make the motion to go into drainage.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's move on into drainage.
While we're on our way in there, I just was gonna make a statement for the, our media. You guys, well, you guys are. You guys did an awesome job, and I'm not just talking about the football, um, the volleyball and all the things that you guys cover and, and keep the people up to speed in, in the news up here. You guys do, for a small town, you guys do a heck of a job, and I just wanted to tell you thank you for, and I enjoyed, I listened to part of the game the other night and was watching, because I really have a hard time listening to it on TV to the people that. I was missing the, oh, dear mama. I had it on the radio to listen to that, so. We were kind of, everybody tore our heart out a little bit when they lost, but I guess that's the, the break, so.
I'll give you a copy of that.
And I'm sure we'll have some great articles and pictures in the paper when we get that this week, so.
Yeah, it was, uh, okay, Humboldt had a good turnout over there.
They did.
Huge crowd.
Okay, I have been asked to find out a little bit of information on what is supplied by the engineers as far as like final ASBILs and what the verbiage is on the contracts for our liability. We had one major project in seven sub-two where they did not get two of the GPS locates. And that, that creates a little bit of a liability on our end. So I've been asked to do some research on what the actual verbiage is in the contract. In the email that I had sent Jacobson West regard, I was just asking for some information. Lori had sent me back a copy of what they use as verbiage, but she specifically stated, we have not required that ASBILs be submitted periodically, only after the construction is completed. But we are thinking of changing the requirements to submitting ASBILs with each pay application. We're pretty sure that's. We're pretty sure that these requirements would cover any of the problems you've mentioned below. Because I had just stated that we got ourselves into a situation that, um, you know, in future reference.
Well, we find these things out after the contractor's left.
Right.
And this way, we would get ninety percent covered before the.
Right. And even she's admitted that it, it would be a good idea for them to get periodic updates instead of waiting until the end of the contract. And then just submitting everything for a final payment. So what is attached to the email is actually Jacobson West regard's general conditions that they pretty much put the same verbiage in all contracts. And I've highlighted just a couple areas that. a couple areas that, you can review these, but most of their contracts can be anywhere from fifty to seventy pages long, so I would have to do a little more digging in some of their contracts, too.
Well, I'll be the guilty party, because I told her the other day we were visiting, and I just said, "We can't let this slide," and then all of a sudden we have another project up and we haven't pushed for any more, um, clarity as to what we were talking about. And I also recommend that she would, uh, email, uh, any other drainage clerks and see if, how the other counties, what they're, what they were doing to, maybe we could steal some of their ideas as to how it's put together. I just don't want to get to that point again where we look at each other and say, "How the heck did we end up not having the as-builts when the project's done and the clock is running and the interest is appealing?"
Yeah, here with King, when it's...
Right.
Yeah.
So, that was...
As a prime example.
I put her up to this, so don't be mad at her, I was the guilty.
No, that's fine, because what I had received on the, uh, the back page of the stuff that is attached to the email, it states, and this is Jacobson Westergaard, "One complete set of modified drawings shall be furnished to the engineer prior to submission of final application." And that's where they would like to change the wording to where they need to have more than one.
More, yeah.
Yeah, don't wait until the project is done.
Every time they ask for a payment, they bring us an up-to-date as-bilt.
I like that. I like that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that keeps us from having the guys that are out in the field, um, losing track of it on their phone or whatever they're doing.
Yeah.
It needs to be pushed into the foreman's hand, um, don't you think, Ben? I mean, you're an engineer. How do they do that for you guys?
Well, I mean...
You don't have as-builts, but...
No, we build our own as-builts for our projects, but, I mean, we have physical boots on the ground at the locations, so we know, we don't pay them for more than what they've done, because we've actually been out there and seen it. And as-builts are definitely, you know, not necessarily a requirement, but they're definitely strongly suggested so that you guys can pass on as the projects coming.
So, is there any difference from your Boltman mink?
Not really. Um, Boltman minks are a little more wordy, that, um, they're basically just stating that we need, no contractor's going to be paid, um, let's see, releasing statutory requirements for the closeout of drainage.
Yeah, they hold back, they retain each until the as-builts, basically.
Right, so that, and that again is you're waiting till the project closeout instead of as-you-go.
But the difference being if you're dealing with a three-hundred, four-hundred-foot project versus...
Three miles.
Three miles, like, you wanna, what you wanna cost over there and then several years because of the conditions, um, all of a sudden then we don't have any.
Although, I think this is what stated in the email, that basically your as-bilt is this, that, but it's being put together as it's moving along.
Along rather than wait until you're all done.
And it is due diligence between the engineer and the contractor to get that accomplished with all of the locations marked correctly, which has got missed in that small project, so that they are looking at it more closely as they're building it and as they're making these payments. So, I mean, that does seem to make sense. And I know there was talk earlier of redoing a contract that says if there's something missed, it's on the engineer company and the contractor. It's their dime, not the district's.
My question is, Eric, if we, do we have this ability to put this in when we let the project out and everybody that's here bidding on the job knows that that's the way it has to be done, because we aren't gonna sit and wait months and months afterwards?
Right, or this might just address it to where, when, you know, like I said, it does make a huge difference if it's, you know, half a mile or if it's four miles.
Right.
But regardless, as it's being put together, it shouldn't be to the very end, and here's your as-bilt and here's what we missed on it.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that's the thing, the farmers get it that day, and they got about half hour to look at it.
Yeah.
You know, they, it's, it's as it's going as we go, then we have a little more time to get it fixed with the contractor still there.
So, you say, "This is the project, and we went this far, and this is what's done, and here's the connections." I mean, wouldn't you think you'd build the as-bilt as you're building it?
You would think so.
I mean, it's...
But typically what they've been doing is they've been putting it in their phone.
Right.
And then when we're done, all done, then put, you throw it to the office and they do the as-builts and...
Yeah, they take all the information and then compile it.
And if the last day, the guy drops his phone in the trench and they bury it somewhere, you lose all your information.
Must be having that noted as the project's moving along.
I agree.
That should cover it, and I'm not afraid to put in language that says if there's a screw-up, the contractor and the engineer are responsible, because it's stated that already in these contracts that that's what's gonna be the final resolve.
Yeah.
And if you don't produce the final resolve or if there's malfunctions, it's your dime.
Yeah.
We had, what, several different crews change hands in that project, and over the time, there was different foreman, different crew, different, same, same company, just, so that's part of the reason we lost part of our, and had to go back and digging for it.
Well, and Ben just made a point to, granted for the county stuff, he's probably out there, and there isn't an issue with these things, because he's watching the project. You know, granted, it might be just a box calvert or something like that, but still, he's watching it take place, there's not an issue with it. And the engineering companies are famous for charging for their field guy, what in the heck is the field guy doing?
Yeah.
That is, that's their thing.
Yeah.
That's their due diligence, they're getting paid a good, good sum of money to engineer the project, they better damn well be keeping track of it and having a communication...
They shouldn't add any cost to the project, because they're just doing it as they go rather than all doing that.
Right.
I agree.
But we have to put teeth into it to say that this is very serious matter, and we don't want any more malfunctions when we get to as-builts.
Basically, you don't get your pay, you don't get your number-one pay voucher until we have that information in our hands.
Right, so it starts right from the inception, when they start on the project.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to give her direction as to how, before we go to the next job, that we aren't searching or trying to put this thing together when we have a contractor coming in in two days to fit the job.
Yeah.
We have a contractor, we have something in order.
My only question, and the question that contractors and engineering firms are all gonna have, is how detailed do you want these as-builts? Just where you've connected to existing tile or like a...
I don't think it's...
...art here status, like we're at station...
Yeah, I would think...
I don't think that, uh...
I didn't see it says that in their pay vouchers, that the work completed, what you're paying.
Well, we wanna see the, it doesn't have to be the final product, obviously, but we wanna see you're tracking this.
Yeah, we've made...
Here's the as-bilt, I mean, for God's sake, if you know where the tile's going, you have the preliminary engineering plans, we're moving along here, this is what's done, this is where we are, this is what's connected, in every pay voucher. So, it doesn't have to be, you know, fine-tuned, it's absolute...
That way, a farmer can come in, they've gone through my land, I can go in and see, "Oh, yeah, they got all my tiles, no, they missed one, because I know I put one in here and it's not on the as-bilts."
Yep.
Agreed.
You know?
Yeah, so I think that every...
That's just gonna be their question.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be you want those as-builts. We wanna make sure nothing's missed.
Yeah.
Right.
More so than when they get all said and done, it can be the fancy, you know, with everything, but this is just that you're not missing something.
Well, we know there's adjustments made in the payments, because when they have tile laying out on the ground, and they might have it run up the string quite a ways, and we have some extra money outstanding that's, that's paid ahead.
Yep.
But that keeps them working, but at least we know that the stuff behind is buried in the correct lateral or the...
Yeah, and if they're on site, if there's a problem, they can just quick go back and repair it.
They're there, yes, if they, if you, yeah, worst-case scenario, and you get to that date as-bilt, and like you just mentioned, Rick, someone looks at that and said, "We'll just say there's, okay, there's three connections, there're supposed to be four or four of them. They're there, they don't have the backup..."
Most farmers know where their tile are.
Yeah, yeah. And the, the, between the contractor and engineers, they're supposed to know where the tile connections are.
Yeah.
But you're gonna, like, if they're there, so if there's one out of the four missed, they're not done with it, and you're doing this at the, you know, completion hearing.
Yeah.
You're doing it right then, okay, we're gonna go do it, they're gonna go back, they're gonna find it, it's on their, you know, time, but they're gonna get it right.
Yeah.
And then when we get the final one, it should be just the final one and there's nothing missed.
Okay, now you have a book written, what, are you any closer?
Any more questions? No, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually just received an email back from Crystal in Webster County this morning, and she said, um, "They just go by what the engineers supply in their preliminary reports," and she said basically all the verbiage is the same for them, is that they don't receive anything until the final as-bilt from the completion hearing. And I just, I had asked her the same question that I had sent Jacobson Westergaard, "Is there anything that we can do to safeguard the county's liability?" And she, she also agreed that it would be nice to have updates as you go. And like you said, if something is missed and you're a quarter of the way through or halfway through the work project, you can go back and fix that versus waiting all the way till the end of the project.
They might be gone.
And by then...
Well, they usually are gone by the time we have our completion hearing, they're, they're on to the next project.
Yep. Well, I think that, it appears that would solve the problem, and this is, Kim is from Jacobson Westergaard, or, excuse me, Lori.
Lori, yeah, she is from Jacobson Westergaard.
They've addressed that, and that they follow through with that, keeps them on task, keeps the contractor, which is what they're supposed to be doing anyway.
Yeah.
It's not like this is anything that's not supposed to be done.
No, we're not requiring anything.
No.
But it does give our local farmers the ability to come in and look at the work that is completed.
Bingo.
And they can say, "Jeez, I know I got more tile out there than two connections."
Well, like I said, they're...
The farmer isn't waiting till after the project.
True, but at least it's, then it's not our fault.
Right.
It's his fault for not checking.
Bingo, but then they have something to check.
Yeah.
Nine out of ten of them, they aren't gonna, if someone's out in their field, they're gonna drive out there to see one.
About every day it is.
Yeah.
Sometimes hourly.
Yeah, they take pretty, uh, good note of timing projects.
Awesome.
Yep, I think that'll work. I'd like to see his, uh, weekly report.
I would like to, I mean, I don't have a problem with him telling us that we've reached the twenty-five percent or we've reached the forty percent and we're right on schedule for our month that we figured it'd take us.
Aye, let, let's see what you got.
I...
You know, give us some, it could be a rough sketch, yeah, it doesn't have to be anything fancy.
Doesn't have to be a completion, all we need to know is we're in the area, we're in the ballpark for what we're, what was bid at, or it's getting sandy and tough digging or whatever. I guess that, I agree, dude.
There is one area in the Boltman mink on the second page, there states, "Project Supervision." It's, it's the second one, the second one I gave you.
Number C.
Yep.
Number three C.
Yep, three C. Weekly progress meetings, so they are requesting that the contractors do keep in touch with the engineers, and, you know, I don't know how far a contractor actually makes it on a project in a week.
Well, and it, it's more than just a, they, they, it seems to be miscommunication between the contractors and the engineering firm, either party, it seems where these problems arose. Um, because, and there's, there's no reason that should happen, it's not that, I mean, Ben does it all the time and...
So, when we have our construction projects, we fill out a, uh, weekly report of working days, is what we do. And it'll list if the contractor's working, you know, if we charge them a day because their late start date's already happened, um, if they're, they're working, we list what they did that day, so, I mean, they can do the same thing for years, move from station three fifty to three sixty on Monday, move from station whatever to whatever on Tuesday. Wednesday it rained, no work. Thursday, fields, you know, field was muddy, still didn't work.
Right.
Friday got it in, got back in, but only moved fifty feet. And then we submit them every week, and that's a chance for the contractor to come back and say, "Hey, I shouldn't be charged for Thursday because, because of the rain on Wednesday."
Conditions, right.
Conditions. Instead of coming back at the very end and saying, "Hey, I shouldn't be getting charged all these extra work from days."
Three.
Makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Okay, when it comes time to be letting bids, you'll get all this information in the contract.
Absolutely. And I, I would think that the, they only need to amend...
A little bit.
Yeah, one, basically one paragraph, and just stating, you know, that they, they get a minimum of weekly updates from the contractors, so the engineers, and the engineers can send me an email.
Mm-hmm.
So, you can listen for them.
Exactly.
That's a good idea.
Nothing else?
No.
I'm making motion to go out of drainage.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're back in Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
We have, it looks like we've completed everything.
Oh, Randy.
That's the word. Hey, Kim, I have a quick question for you. Do you want a picture of four beavers or...
I'll, I'll attach it to the work order.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do about sending that to you.
Are we putting an APB out on them or...
No, these beavers are done. Oh, they are done. I will, uh, see if, I don't know, but, because I don't know if he will, but I have confirmation on the work order that he has on beavers.
Humboldt County.
But other than that, it's from Andrew Birdie.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Bring the tail in.
Yeah. You can bring beaver tails in for months, I guess that this is...
There's a lot of them out there anymore.
He got, there was a, two, I think there was two big ones and two little ones.
Would require a year or...
Nah, you could, you get, they, you have to rely on the honesty, and I told these guys, I said, "You got one chance to prove that you're not honest, and then you're not ever gonna trap another beaver," so I like to put the fear of God in them, and they, they know that. Fifty bucks a beaver. So, otherwise, you go with five. Scared.
And the thing is, if you don't get rid of them, when you clean out the dam, the dam's back...
No, no.
Oh, yeah, they don't.
You gotta see them, yeah.
They're going busy as a beaver, so...
You know, beavers, there's a couple of big ones, they're like this big, little ones are about that big.
Okay, we're back as supervisors, is there anything else for us, Trish?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Yeah, motion, first and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine fifty-two.
All right.